All right, good morning to everybody. Today is Monday, April the twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, nine o'clock a.m. Gonzales County Commissioners Court will now be in session. We'll move into, first thing is public comments and we have Mr. Randy Dupree from Atoyac and the floor is yours.
My name is Randy Dupree, owner of Atoyac Energy Services, based in Gonzales, Texas since March twenty thirteen. Got a yard and yard in Texas. Run fifty trucks, forty-five belly dumps, thirteen end dumps. I have every piece of equipment that it takes to do any type of construction work, motor grader, rollers, wheel loaders, track overs. Exclusively I work for EOG Resources, but I do work for Martin Marietta, Colorado Material, Brontex every day. And my initial proposal here is I have trucks up in the San Antonio, San Marcos, New Brunswick area every day getting done with commercial dollar. And I would like to give you guys what I would call a backhaul rate, back to your stockpile, a reduced rate on trucking to bring to your stockpile. Sort of kill two birds with one stone, gives you a break on your trucking, give me something to do. Also like to offer my services in emergency situations when needed, where available, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, for any kind of situations whatsoever. Have my own haul trucks, have the ability to bring y'all water on your county roads if you need them in the summertime to process them. Feel comfortable, most of you gentlemen know EOG Resources, they will provide you water. They provide y'all material already, some grease clean. And that relationship, from what I'm being told, will continue on throughout. The Eganford is gonna get a little busier back east of here, starting, has already started, I think we're gonna see increased activity. All the way back to the side of Shiner to Mortalsville, so that's my proposal. You got, I'll get y'all price sheets, information back to your stockpiles. I'll also have you an hourly rate, if you get in the bind, you need a little bit of help, extra trucking, I can bring it direct from Brontex, or I can bring it from your stockpiles. Good guys, over twenty of my employees are Gonzales County residents, myself included, my, my sons, so that's it. It'd be, it'd be easy services, all good equipment, safety ratings are great, and I think y'all see my trucks every day in town, so I appreciate everything you can do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move to number two. Ray Allen Smith, Smith?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this morning. Just wanted to make you aware that Thursday, May the first, is the seventy-fourth National Day of Prayer. And this year's emphasis is on hope, and it is pour out to the God of hope and be filled. And that comes from Romans, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace and believing, so that by the power of the Holy Spirit you may abound in hope." And I think we all can recognize that a nation, as well as individuals who are without hope, are bent on self-destruction. And so I would just encourage you to come be a part of this National Day of Prayer. Join me and a group brothers, we'll meet back here on the northwest corner of the courthouse property, to come together in a time to share, share and pray for our nation. But more specifically for our churches, our homes, our families, education, arts and entertainment, for our elected officials, starting at the local level, going all the way up to the presidency of the United States, it's just an informal gathering. But of all the things we need in, in our lives is hope, and that hope only comes through the saving grace of Jesus Christ. I would like to share that national prayer that's been written, so if you'd just allow me a few minutes to do that, I would appreciate your attention. Says, "God of hope fills us with all joy and peace and believing, so that we may all abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. You have caused us to be born again to a living hope through the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead. Therefore, we hope in what we do not see. The world is not our home or reality, but the Lord is our rock, our truth, and our certainty. God of hope, we pour out our praise and are filled with your powerful presence. We pour out repentance of sin and are filled with forgiveness and righteousness. We pour out pain from the attacks of the enemy, anxiousness, fear and anger, and you fill us with courage, assurance and love. We pour out our needs, our desires, of our hearts, and are filled with your kingdom provision and purpose. We pour out our house for our hearts, for our nation, for our people, our places, relationships and responsibilities. The Lord has established the church, family, education, business, military, arts, entertainment, media and government. May all who live, serve and steward in these be filled with your purpose, wisdom, strength and truth. Let your loving kindness, O Lord, be upon us as we have hoped in you, in avowing hope. Anpried by our hope, in the name of Jesus, we pray." Again, if you'd like to join us Thursday at ten, we'll come, join together for a time of specific prayer with the specific individuals, not only in our community, but across the nation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, third public comment is Sheriff Keith Smith.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Couple things. On Saturday, as y'all know, our previous sheriff, Robert Incline, passed away, and that's considered a line of duty death. And his name was placed on the memorial in Austin there at the Capitol, and so I went up with the Incline family as they celebrated basically his name going on that memorial, and they did that Saturday night. So it's quite something to see if y'all ever get a chance to go up for one of those, those memorials are really, really nice. Secondly, just want to be able to know that in our jail currently, with immigration detainees, we have fifteen. And I'm thinking that may be four or five more than the last time I recorded, but the number obviously is going up and down every day, but we've got fifteen as of this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, there's no other signups for public comments, so we'll move into number one. Approve the minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five Commissioners Court meeting.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the Commissioners Court meeting for the April fourteenth, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number two, the Treasurer's monthly report, receive monthly report and consider approval of, of order, approve Treasurer's monthly report and take appropriate action according to Local Government Code, section one one four.
I was just gonna let the court know that we received two depository contract bids, one from South Star and one from Prosperity Bank. And I will be working on bid sheets this week, and we will be choosing a bank on May twelfth.
Thank you. It was received. It was received, number two. Then move to number three. County Treasurer's monthly reports, approve affidavit stating that the county treasurer has fulfilled the requirements pursuant to Local Government Code, section one, one four C. Motion in the second to approve the County Treasurer's monthly report, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, number four, the County Auditors' Monthly Reports for January, February and March of twenty twenty five. Being received. Number five, approve proclamation designating April twenty seventh through May fourth, twenty twenty five as Soil and Water Stewardship Week. And I have the proclamation here, which is Soil and Water Stewardship Week Proclamation. Whereas healthy fertile soil and clean water is the lifeblood of nutrition and sustenance throughout the world, and that soil conservation is a, is a benefit to everyone. And whereas effective conservation practices ensure soil, water, animals, plants and air can provide a rich standard of living. And whereas our survival and continued production and access to quality food and water depends upon the robust management of diverse natural resources, resources nationwide. And whereas stewardship calls upon everyone, every individual to help conserve these precious resources to ensure their prosperity for generations to come. Need a motion.
I move we approve the proclamation designating April twenty seventh to May fourth, twenty twenty five as Soil and Water Stewardship Week.
Motion in the second to proclaim the week of April twenty seventh through May fourth, twenty twenty five as Soil and Water Stewardship Week. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, therefore I do hereby proclaim that the week of April twenty seventh through May fourth, twenty twenty five is Texas Soil and Water Stewardship Week. And we got some representatives here, if y'all would like to come up and get some pictures. All right, number six, we'll have a presentation from Phil Vaughn with Armstrong Vaughn and Associates, P.C., regarding the county audit report.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. So we're the independent CPA you hired to audit your annual wage report. So when you give it to the public or potential creditors, they know that independent third parties look at those numbers and agree with them. We've done our due diligence, we've tested them and we've given you a clean opinion, which means we agree that annual report is accurate. There's a one-page highlight that's kind of tucked in there, they're just gonna touch on a couple of things around there. But as we're going through our work, if we find anything that you're doing inappropriate, or that we think you should be doing better, we'll bring that to your attention. We had no material findings or significant deficiencies. There is a letter that accompanies the audit report that goes through a couple of required communications, like if we have any difficulties working with you guys, or any disagreements. We didn't have anything like that. There were a couple of recommendations that have been carried forward in the last couple of years. The first one is you have a revolving loan participant that's delinquent for a couple of years now. Since I issued that, your treasurer did get in contact with that person and they've given her a letter. So it might be something that the court would want to put on a future agenda to discuss what we want to do with that loan. The other recommendation was to have your personnel policy updated, I know it's something that's been in the works, your processing, so to get that put into place. Aside from that, just looking at numbers, so both your general fund and road bridge did decrease their reserves last year just a little bit. But carrying forward into this year, your general fund had just over seven months in reserves, which is a good operational cushion, but doesn't give you a lot for extra. So it's a good number of people, a lot of them are lower above that. And then on the road bridge front, you had just under two years, so a little more cushion in that, that fund. Those are my highlights, if you have any to answer any questions or?
Yeah, I have one question is, and I know that the court had passed it, the last, last budget, which was the OPEB, the three hundred dollars per month. And I know that I had contacted you and you'd kind of advised, basically, that that's really not a very good idea. And I just was curious if you could declare to, or visit with the court. I know Shawna may, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but just kind of clarify that so the court? Because we do have two new ones here that, to try to understand that, if you don't mind.
Sure. My first concern is just operational, so trying to find individuals to give them a check is difficult. And it's not a, it's not an opt-in policy, it's kind of a, everybody gets it. So if you made it an opt-in policy, it'd be a little bit easier where they had to come to you to get the money, and they're not having to track somebody down, find, find them to give them the money. So that makes it a little bit of a challenge. And then just from a tax recording situation, it's a little bit odd in terms of, and you're giving them money, you're not necessarily sure if they're spending it on a, on a plan. So then that makes it to where, what does it mean to that participant in terms of when they get the check, is it a taxable income, if you're not taxable income, so there's a little bit of issues there. But then you also have just a little bit of a burden on staff trying to find people and track it. So if you had a third party that managed it for you, that'd be a little bit easier, that's what I would do. It's just a little bit of an unusual policy, and it has a little bit more complexity than Mindy was intended, that's just why independent. Another thing answered your question or?
Yeah. I just don't know how, I mean, depending on, you know, I know we have a hundred and seventy that are home as retirement, and I think it's only twenty-two or twenty-three that are actually getting it now. And if, if we have more people that end up retiring, could that be something that would be? an impact on the county budget-wise, depending in the future?
Well, it could, it could balloon larger than you might anticipate. Uh, like I just said, right now, there's not a ton of people on the plan, but it, it could grow. The, you pay an actuary to value the plan for you and it did have a significant impact on the, the cost of that plan, what they calculate, but they're calculating what is the future outflows going to be for all of your retirees and they come back to what is that in today's dollars, what is the liability today? So they've been calculating that every year, it's been fairly consistent, none of them are changing, it increased significantly. Uh, it's not necessarily going to hit your budget right away, but they're saying over time it's going to hit your budget. Uh, and so they have, uh, there's a report, but I know the, the honors office has, that you can look at that, give you some of those projections, uh, but it wasn't being changed.
So is that also something that in the future that could uh hinder the county? If we were gonna go out for any type of a bond rating, if we were going to do something, would that, would that be a negative impact on that or could that be a negative impact on that?
Uh, potentially, I mean, it depends on how secure the county is and your tax rate, how much their tax rate can afford. So if you have a large, if you, if you can easily pay for your bills with your tax rate, you have a real bill up, they may not consider it as an issue. But if they think that you're running slim and then they're looking at this potentially being another cost, they might be concerned. Uh, but they also probably would know that you can take it off anytime. So if you can change the policy and remove the benefit, which is not great politically, but it is a, a way to fix a problem if you got into a major issue. So it may not hurt your rating too much, but it, it doesn't help.
Thank you. I'll have any other questions. All right, we move to number seven, uh, update from John Duke with CPM regarding Annex Building Project and the Randall Rather Building.
Good morning, so we've got some movement now. The demolition we're anticipating well starts, at least mobilize uh on Monday next week, so we'll update you with that, if that changes, but that, that's the current plan. So we've got uh, that finalized, the role of law is going to be contracted, which I think I mentioned, or at least I mentioned the final number last week. So got that squared away, demo will be starting, uh, laser mobilization with fence and stuff on Monday next week. Uh, construction, so we are, we are close to, uh, I, I think we've got our numbers finalized, so now we're just going through, beginning this, finishing the scoring matrix. And we'll have a recommendation to you by the end of this week. The uh, it's, it's going to be well within budget, including when we're here and factor in the roof replacement as well, which is around half a million dollars. So we'll be fine there and goal is to get that wrapped up, uh, the recommendation by the end of this week and then we'll enter into negotiations with the, the selected contractor on, on the contract. And that hopefully will take a week or two and we should have that teed up in plenty of time for when we get the, the bond, or the tax note funds. On uh Randall Rather Building, uh, just a quick update there, W J E was out last Monday and uh we're doing some testing on the building. They also removed some, some loose stone that they observed, uh, just that was, that they thought was a nature fallen off. So they did take off some loose stone. And then also, um, uh, O'Connell Architecture was out last week too, just documenting the condition of the building, which will allow somebody in the future, whether that's you or somebody else, to restore that. So we expect to have a report from the findings, right, W J E, on or about May ninth. So we've, not this Friday, but the next Friday. So it should be, the next time I come in here, we'll give you an update on what that report says. You have any questions on Annex or Randall Rather?
I'm with you, gentlemen, y'all got anything?
The footprint for your, for your demolition, you've been working out with Sheriff's Department, everything good as that?
Um, yes, so, so we're short acres, yes. And we've got uh Mr. West to next door at West One, we've got uh, he's, he's on board. So giving him an update in just next plan tomorrow and everything should be.
It's not going to affect anything, I know with transferred prisoners and people coming in and out, no other agency would be affected or change anything to them.
That'll definitely be different, but we have worked out a way for uh eighteen acres and whatnot to get through there. And we've worked on that most of Scott and we're in the communicating with the sheriff. And then we had to repower the light poles that were out front, which would pull power from the jail, which also could coordinate most of the property with Scott.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duke. Number eight, consider and take action on bid for resale property, uh, suite sixty-seven ninety-two, R one eight zero zero one, parcel one three, three, nine, four, uh, zero point two five three acres, more or less situated in the east, one half of Lot Three, Block Thirteen, uh, third subdivision of the Lafayette, uh, Place, addition and addition to the city of Gonzalez, uh, County of Gonzalez, Texas, as described in deed dated March fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, uh, from Katie L. Holtz to Jack M. Craven, uh, E T U X in volume six thirty, page fourteen, deed records of Gonzalez County, Texas.
Good morning. This is one of the properties that was at our December third, twenty twenty-four tax sale and did not receive any bids at said sale. It has been on our resale list and we did receive one bid, bid amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The original opening bid was twenty-six thousand, eight forty-four seventy-four. Of course, um, for the, for the two new commissioners, when we put a, um, property up for tax sale, what the original opening bid is, is the amount of delinquent taxes at the judgment date plus any costs that are due at that time. Uh, so as this bid conforms to the county's policy, uh, resale properties held in trust, with the amount of the bid being more than one half of the original opening bid, I recommend approval of said bid pending the approval of the other entities.
Is that the entire property or is that just a piece of?
Um, there were, for this property, there were multiple, there, there were about ten pro- uh, properties that were under uh this suit. Uh, this is the third property that we have received a resale bid on for this suit. This is uh just one of the properties. Uh, if you'll look, there's a map attached. This property is at the um, corner of, I don't know, St. Louis and um.
Well, this one's part of the law, so this one's just a lot.
Yeah, it's going to be St. Patrick, St. Louis, St. Patrick, not, not where the, uh, station is, but next door. A little bit further down.
Yes, it is too, but it never, never sold. That, the other one that's next.
It's the, it's the one with the trees on it there, just that little.
But the other one, the other one next to it is also the same thing that has not been, uh.
The, the one that has the, the, the whole store on it, that, that one had, we have not received a bid on it yet. There, there's still about eight properties on our resale list. It, it's this, uh, parcel one three, three, nine, four, if you look at the, the map.
If we pass on, say we didn't bid on it, the other entities did, what would be the status of the property?
If you pass on it, I do not present it to the other entities. It comes to Commissioners Court first and it's, um, if, if, if you pass on it, I don't present it to them.
When is that other next parcel property, when, when does it look like it'll become a resale? The bigger piece of that property?
I haven't received any resale bids on that. It's on, it's, it was, it was on our December, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, tax sale as well. We received no bids at the sale and it was struck off. And it is now on our, uh, resale list as well. No one has submitted any bids on that. Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact amount of the original opening bid. It was somewhere in the two hundred and seventy-five thousand mark. I'd have to look to see the exact.
Do you know what the total distance, um, total distance, the total property, uh, combined in both of those places that are still of, of one?
Off the top of my head, no. Cause they're, they're different parcels.
Cause that one is, 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 or a quarter, if there's a, that's a quarter.
I'd like to see it passed on, see what happens with the rest of it, if you don't mind.
All right, I had a motion in the second to pass on, uh, item number eight. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, update from Jimmy Harless regarding drought conditions and the burn ban status.
Good morning. K D V I stands at four seventy-one, which is actually a lot better than it has been. I would recommend, based on the fact that we have some, I don't want to jinx this, but some decent chances of rain coming uh in the next seven days, that the judge consider, um, changing the burn ban and taking it off. We have.
After the rain or before?
I think with our K D V I sitting at four seventy-one, I think we're good, Judge, uh, right now. We, we're starting to have some folks and it's understandable that they're burning stuff, assuming that the burn ban has been removed. Technically they haven't, I think the Sheriff's Office made a little call this weekend and it was an honest thing, they didn't, they just assumed that it was off. So, um, you know, it's totally up to you. I know that the, this is not technically on the agenda for the court to decide, but whatever you think is best.
I would like more information from the court and what y'all think.
I know it's greened up a lot, you know.
Do what you did the last time, if it does rain.
Take it out?
Yeah, take it out.
So leave it in effect, depending on these next few days. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to number two. Discuss with action, approval of, uh, rural community, uh, precinct two, uh, Kumar Development?
Yes, Commissioner Brudowski had asked that I have some discussions with Mr. Kumar. I actually did, I actually went out to the property, walked the property, stopped there at the road, looked at the ditch that you had, had mentioned. I, I saw no failure of any septic systems currently on the property. That ditch was, I'm assuming, it did not give me any indication that it was raw sewage. I do believe that there's a, it drains off the property. And Commissioner, let me show you, if you don't mind, an aerial map of the property to show you the natural drainage area of it, excluding the ditch. So you can see that the drainage crosses that corner right there.
But they cut that off now and now the ditch.
So my requirement to Mr. Kumar was to fill that ditch back in, let the natural grade happen the way it was intended to happen. I also requested that he go over and talk to the due owner of this property right here, which he has. They're all in agreement that this is a natural grade, I gave him a copy of the aerial.
Okay, in response to your question about the sewer water, it was sewer water that I saw there that day because you can look in this ditch right there and see the white residue that came off. Now, it may have washed off since it rained, but what I was looking at was when there was some white residue and I should have took some pictures of that. But let's put the ball back in your park. I made my statement how I feel about that, you're gonna have twice as many trailers on here, right here, which is going to be twice as much on the sewer. So he's gonna rework this whole sewer here, right?
He's gonna add new septic systems for the new trailers that are aerobics spray.
Right, okay. So you're still gonna have, you're gonna have twice as much drainage. But you can go on out there and talk to him, I'm not the septic man, I'm just the commissioner. I see what's going on there. If you think it's all right, then I'm gonna put the ball in your park and if you run with it. So if we have a problem here, I'm gonna come back to you then, I mean.
I understand.
Is that agreeable with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, because you're the septic man and you're supposed, you're telling me this is gonna be all right. Is that correct?
I'm telling you that the engineer that designed the system is saying it'll be all right. I'm not a designer, so he's got a engineer with a stamp that is designing.
I'm not a designer either, but I know stuff runs downhill.
Sure does and it has for years.
So what we're gonna do, he's gonna cover this ditch in here that was running into the highway and we're gonna run it back across these people and these people are all right with that.
He went and spoke to them, yes. And what I wanted to show you was where the natural drainage area is that shows up on the aerial map.
Yes, I'm very aware of that, we're, but I'm gonna put the, again, I'm gonna put the ball back in your park and if it, if the water sewer water starts running again, I'll call you, then we're gonna have to do something. So I'm going on your authority that this is a good situation.
As of right now and what I looked at, yes, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, based on the, the information we received from Jimmy today, I will ahead and move that we approve it.
All right, and a motion in the second, uh, approval of the rural community, uh, precinct two, Kumar Development. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, discuss with action the variance of Gonzalez County Subdivision Rules, Precinct One, Chanel.
I didn't mean to run you off, Jimmy. Yes, I did, I, I gotta say that. No runoff.
There's a runaway.
Make sure you note that you're real, no runoff. Cause we're gonna have to get him a bucket if we do.
Are you familiar with this?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, eight point something, eight point one seven out of a hundred and eight, so purchasing it from the neighbor?
Yes, sir, it's all in the bag.
So you're good?
I'm good, yes, sir, as long as you're, you're good, we're good.
I am, yes, sir.
Put him on the spot.
Put him on the spot.
Okay, make a motion of approval of various to the Gonzalez County Subdivision Rules, Precinct One, Chanel.
Motion in the second for approval of various to Gonzalez County Subdivision Rules, Precinct One, for Chanel. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Twelve, discuss with action approval of a part-time position for emergency management and permit office.
Yes, sir. I, uh, was very hesitant to bring this up now. I was hoping that I could wait to request a part-time position during budget time. I can tell you that our business to the permit office has significantly increased. I'm assuming and I don't know the exact numbers because they don't turn in permits on newly generated platted lots or even lots that are over ten acres that are not platted before this court. So I can't give you an accurate number, I can't tell you that if you have over two hundred and fifty lots, at some point we're gonna need separate permits on. We've been averaging a little over a hundred permits a year. I can see the train coming. And so I kind of felt like, again, I was hesitant, but to ask for some part-time money to help get me through to the next budget session.
get me through to the next budget session. I think it's, Shauna did a really good job and provided a, a cost estimate of twenty hours a week. This young man that, that wants the job, wants a part-time, I don't see it being a full-time position. I don't see the need for it to be a full-time position in the next couple of years. But, he's wanting to go and get the inspection license, and he would be handling inspections and complaints on the second side, which then frees me up a little bit more on some of the stuff that I'm responsible for. As far as training and, and meetings, and I want to offer the school district, board, safety committee, folks. My struggle is with the time and the comp, and getting my comp time used, because I tend to periodically get quite a bit of comp. So I'm just asking the court that you would, hoping you would consider funding that part-time position. I think, do y'all have the numbers in front of me?
Yes.
Yes. That, that's, I think Shauna figured it out through the end of September, correct? I, I have, and I want to book Council Hall on the spot, but I think I need to thank him if the court approves the part-time position. He has that old Tahoe that I used to drive, that he's willing to let me utilize as a vehicle.
I thought he was gonna do the job. If you got a.
Trust me, you don't want that. So I think I've got a vehicle worked out, which was one of my concerns at the time. It's got a hundred and twenty.
Twenty-five or six thousand.
Hundred and twenty-six thousand miles on it, at least it can get me through for a little bit. He would, the part-time inspector would work about two and a half days a week. He works for Mr. Callender now as an E, as an E M T, so he's on their rotation.
Would there be more continuing education and certifications, or does he have that?
So, there is an inspector school on the calendar for the end of next month. Of course, I couldn't do anything or sign him up until the approval of the court, but I think I have on my budget, and I was gonna go talk to Shauna Legger to make sure that I have enough money to cover the fee for the class, to make sure we have a vehicle. It's in San Antonio. Really, that's all he needs right now.
What's that course gonna cost?
I think it's four or five hundred dollars. And I've got that in my budget to cover it.
Is he local?
Yes, sir. He lives, he's one of the fire captains for Belmont Public Theater Fire Department. He lives, what's that last row, two forty-nine? On eighty?
The subdivision's.
Just north of the Patriot Avenue. He lives on that counter.
Okay.
He's a local boy, was in the army.
So this would be a, a job that would be approved up to our new budget time?
Yes, sir.
We could see if it works out, and if it doesn't work out, then we could do a way to.
Yes, sir. I'm only asking for the funding through the end of September.
With the anticipation of, of it continuing?
Hopefully, because I don't see us slowing down, not at all.
No, thank you, Mr. Duke. I think y'all busy and one act of the woods, that's.
Well, you know, which is kind of odd, because most of the stuff has been in, in three and in two. Now you're starting to see stuff in yours. Tony sees stuff there in Muswell, but it's just now, it's all four precincts.
How do y'all feel about this?
That would be his only job.
Well, yes.
I mean, later, do others, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and I, and I was gonna bring back a proposal to you on the driveway stuff, but that was for next budget. I don't wanna get all in the weeds and that, but I think we can help you guys on that.
I think part-time. I think it'd help you.
Yes, I do, too. I wouldn't ask you.
Maybe we'll keep him having some slip-ups happen in county.
That and delays?
Well, I move we approve item twelve, the part-time position for the emergency management and permit office.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the part-time position for the emergency management permit office. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen, discuss with action approval of allowing the emergency manager fire marshal to take his county vehicle home.
What you're pushing today, aren't you?
Well, if I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. So, I don't wanna be a dead horse in there. But, the position that I'm in for response on both fires and emergency management stuff basically required me to be on call pretty much all the time. And it's just me. I don't have deputies. I don't have anybody to do it. About, and I'm just guessing, about sixty percent of the calls that I have received, whether it's on the emergency management side, which we just had one the other day, two actually, on the emergency management side, or county fires that I'm required by statute to, to go to, or in the northern area of the county, along Interstate Ten, Welder, Flatonia, toward Walton, Harwood. So what I have to do is, is drive to Belmont, change vehicles, which is, could be at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, get the truck, go all the way over there. When I'm done, two or three hours later, whatever it is, either I go back to the office in the middle of the night and stay till the next morning and then ride back to the court, or I gotta drive all the way back to Belmont, switch trucks, get back in my truck, go home, go all the way home, and then the next morning, turn around and come back and start that all over again. I'm not asking for anything special, and, and I'm certain, and I certainly understand the court's position on taking the vehicles out of the county. I, I still attest to the fact that my requirements as the county fire marshal and the emergency management coordinator is different. Because, and let me give you an example. On a structure fire, I am required by statute to go to that structure fire, whether it's accidental, natural, whatever the case may be. Some people have said, well, you can wait till the next morning to go. Well, yes, I can. I've got twenty-four hours of my statute to go to that fire. Here's the dilemma for me. Number one, I'm going to make sure that if there's any occupants or residents in that house that have been displaced, that we deal with the Red Cross and help them at that point. Number two, if there's anything that I think that is either criminal, intentional, or negligent, I have to worry about probable cause to be on the scene. In other words, exigent circumstances allow me to be at that structure in a certain amount of time to not have to have a warrant to be able to go back to that scene. If I wait and go back the next day, there could be a legal problem, and then I would have to go to the county attorney's office to get the warrant or consent of the property owner to be back on scene. So that's why I try to go when the fire is active or has been. It gives me the authority as a fire marshal to be on the scene and to be on my investigation. Sometimes, it's during the week, sometimes it's weekends. I just gave back to miss the, the county four hours of holiday leave because I had no opportunity to take it. So I took, I was gonna take holiday leave, I mean, comp time last week, two days, I was called back a little bit. There went, there went the comp time. Tried very hard, I don't get overtime, I get comp time. Tried very hard to keep that down, because I've heard the court's discussion about the comp time, get it down, get it down, get it down. I'm a one-man shooter. A lot of times when I, when I go to, to get my C E Us, and I've got a lot of training, and the judge knows that too, I've got a lot of requirements to do, all my C E Us for my licenses, I drive my truck to Belmont, park it in Belmont the whole week, take the county truck, or take my truck to the training, where the county is paying more for mileage than it would be if I took the county truck. I hate doing that. Again, I, I'm not asking for anything special, I'm just trying to explain to you that, that my position is just a little bit different than, for example, the sheriff's office position. Yes, he called back, a lot of times those deputies come in, they're working at twelve hour shift, it's good. Not me, I may be here two or three hours and it's gone. But I understand. Roy asked me to put it on the agenda?
Sure.
And I'll make the motion if they didn't take the vehicle to us.
Well, I got a need situation there. Move the wheel there. That way you won't have to park it, right?
I'm probably gonna park myself.
We'll get you a spot up there.
I'm sure you can do it. Right there by the barn.
Right there by the barn. With the money we'd save.
I'm expensive.
No, you wouldn't be. What do you think, George?
I know a, a lot of times he does call me because of the situations that he's in, and, and I do authorize him to go ahead and take the vehicle home. Depending on the situations, it could be the cattle country, there's a lot of stuff that's, that's happening, and I mean, he wears an awful lot of hats, so.
Second to your motion. I'm sorry.
No. Well, I was just gonna ask, Commissioner Doleright and Brzezinski, y'all had a discussion prior, before we came into office, about the county taking their vehicles home and emergency management as well, so I just, you know.
Yeah, we did have them. We did, we disagreed good at that time, but I guess we've dumped more stuff and more stuff on him. And I'm trying to think of something else we didn't, but I haven't had much to look at, but I, I understand the situation, I understand the county's point about the money for it. I mean, we've got a lot of jobs he's doing, so I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right. I had a motion and a second to allow the emergency management, management, manager, fire marshal to take the vehicle home. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Motion passes. Number fourteen, approve purchase of U T V for sale of the sheriff's department's vehicles at the sheriff's department, purchase of U S, U S, approve the purchase of U T V from sale of sheriff department vehicles, sheriff department. Who wrote that?
We wrote it, Judge. I'm sure when you're.
I'll be a term title on that one.
As y'all recall, in our last budget, we had a handful of vehicles that we wanted to sell, and we combined them into one big sale. We were talking, we put it in one big sale, we should get more money out of them. And at the time, the commissioners had approved us taking those funds to buy U T V with, but obviously that was previous budget year, so as we got a couple of new commissioners wanting to bring it back and make sure that the court was aware, that's what we were asking to do, take some of those funds and buy a U T V with it, so they just going into the general fund. And I visited with Shauna, and like I said, we should put it on the agenda, make sure y'all knew, and ask for y'all permission to buy U T V out of the sale of those vehicles.
Well, I know we approved it in the last, last time we talked about it, y'all wanted to buy one, you said just take it out of those funds and do it.
Yes, sir, but obviously it's a new budget year, a new commissioner, so we thought it was right now, we'll get back.
Did the sale of the vehicle cover the cost of the U T V?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We would not overspend what we took in.
Well, I move we approve item fourteen, purchase of U T V for, from the sale of sheriff's department vehicles.
Second. All right. Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the U T V from the sale of the sheriff's department vehicles. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen, discuss with action the approval of the demolition contract for the Gonzales County Annex Project between Robles One L L C and Gonzales County. I believe, you went, you went over that also, Mr. Escobar?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we actually had to bring it back before the court, but we did put it on there just for the court's record, so that everything is known before we sign that contract for the demolition. We just covered our bases twice. And this is, if, this is the contract.
Yeah. If anybody wants to do it, like, you gotta look over there.
Yeah, look over there. That's why he, uh, our county attorney, they've already, they've already went over it. And of course, Mr. Ducasse, too.
I left it over there. Take their word for it.
Yeah.
I move we approve the demolition contract for the Gonzales County Annex Project between Robles One L L C and Gonzales County.
So, motion and a second to approve the demolition contract between Gonzales County, for Gonzales County Annex Project between Robles One L L C and Gonzales County. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, executive session discussed only close to the public pursuant to chapter five five one, the Texas Government Code. Executive session items may be discussed and acted upon in appropriate and open session, section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney, and the section five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property discussed, consider possible action regarding, possible future utilization of Texas Department of Public Safety, Greater Austin, Travis, regional radio system, including coverage, maintenance, subscriptions, upgrades, future upgrades, use, leasing, project, projected cost, and possible benefits of the service utilization under the Emergency Communication Towers Project under G L O Contract twenty-two zero eight five zero five two D three zero five. I have to ask, toss the video, or he's the one that wrote this thing, I don't, I don't know.
Where is he?
I'm sure he'll be right back. Standing on the back. Standing on the back.
I was just gonna touch base with y'all on that number 29. We're taking that out of that county judge supplement fund for the television because we have the television that floats back and forth to the deal. And I think that, you know, I've got money that's excess in there that's just sitting there and it's been sitting there for years that needs to be, we can use that, won't touch anything else. But we're gonna put a big, real big TV right there behind the judge's bench and actually put that, that come and take it flag on it to stay on at all times so it'll look really, really nice. And then we're also gonna put another TV right here, a little bit smaller, so that people can see it out there. Y'all can watch it. We can turn around and watch the big one, but it'll just enhance the courtroom and we need to spend that money. It's been sitting there for a long time, so that just let y'all know what that one is.
I'm ready.
All right.
Any other?
No, sir.
I move we approve the budget amendments 28, 29, and 30. Unless the sheriff has something to say, you may go ahead and say.
No, sir. I do not, I mean, what we're asking for is moving the, the funds from our regular pay to overpay.
It's not changing this.
Short in that line up. Thank you, thank you.
Kind of a line item transfer from stuff we hadn't even.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the budget amendments. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, read and approve bills.
Move we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second to pay the bills. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number 20, discuss with action approval of a resolution declaring Gonzalez County official intent to financial expenditures to be incurred by the county.
Is this the resolution we need for the rainbow rafters and anything?
This is gonna be, yes. Yes, this is the one to roll, roll with that. And then that next one is the one that we will get the information to get back. Have you seen that resolution? Mr. Escamora?
I'm sorry, I just walked into the, what number you want?
Uh, we're on number 20. It's the resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures.
Yes.
Yes.
We're okay?
Yes, sir.
This is just saying that we have an intent to do some financial expenditures. Is that where the amount is?
Yep.
Okay. I move we approve item 20.
Sorry. Motion in a second to approve item 20 for the resolution declaring Gonzalez County's official intent for finance expenditures. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number 21, discuss with action approval of an order authorizing the issuance of Gonzalez County, Texas tax note, series 2025, authorizing the sale thereof and enacting provisions, incident and related to the issuance of said notes. And this one here is, is when we placed this onto the agenda, they said that they, we had already put it on the agenda, but they would not have this till about noon is when, when they would get the actual amount figure. So they were asked that we, if we, we could just reconvene recess and reconvene at 1:00 PM so that we can get the figures and then we can vote on it at that, at that time.
Now, when you talk about figures, you're talking about the amount.
That's the percentage rate. The percentage rate on the. That's the percentage rate. The percentage rate on the tax note.
On the tax note.
And, uh, yeah. And I said, well, we could do it at different times, but we would had to have done it at the next meeting because you can't call a special session for any tax-related notes. So if somebody would, uh, would not mind tabling this till 1:00 PM when we get the information that we're required.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Motion in a second to table 21 till we reconvene at 1:00 PM. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries. So, um, at this time, Commissary's Court will be in recess till, uh, 1:00 PM where we will come back and receive the information from Bickerstaff and then we will move from there.